Welcome to the Norton Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, June 23rd. I'm going to read, as usual, the governor's order here. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That's Chapter 30A, Section 18, and Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Norton Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right indoor requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Norton website. That's www.nortonma.org. For this meeting, folks may participate in the following ways. First is to join in line by video, clicking the link on the Norton Planning Board website. The second is to join through the Zoom app. If you have the app, you can enter meeting ID 638-929-1060. Or if you want to just call in, you can call 646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 638-929-1060. And you might have to try at times to connect. If, let's see. You may also view this meeting on Norton Cable Access, June 15th, or the next day on Norton Media Center's YouTube page. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings in real time through technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to pdigusepp@nortonmaus.com. Additionally, you'll find meeting materials at the Norton Planning Board website. That's www.nortonma.org/planningboard. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access these proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so despite the best efforts, we'll post on the Town of Norton website. It's www.nortonma.org. An audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible there. Never get tired of saying that. We don't have any minutes tonight, right? To review?
Correct, we'll have them ready when you meet in July.
We do have a few bills.
Just have that one. Unfortunately, this was one that came in around the time we were, you know, transitioning out of the office. But it's a bill from John Chessia for services he had provided for stormwater peer review for Cumberland Farms. My apologies, this fell through. But as far as we know, we're up to speed after this on all of our, all of our, all of our bills.
Did we get that a while ago, or is that?
Yeah.
Because I know he was, he was behind on a lot of things, so.
Yes, and, but this came in. It was, this was on me. So, but it's a, it's a, again, for the services that were, if you'd like, I can share this. Let me just do a share here.
It's the one from March.
Oh wow.
If I'm correct.
For SERP, yeah. So here it is. This is, it came in in March, yes, right at that. Anyway, I take responsibility for that. But there is, there are, there's funding for it, but you can see that it's for 1,0018750, and it was review of the plans and calculations in the submittal of the letter.
Okay, anyone on the board have questions on this one?
There are funds available for that, Paul?
Yes, yes. So it'll be closed out after this, so we'll, you know, notify the applicant to release whatever remaining sure peer review funds are available.
Okay, if there are any questions, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve. Someone, it's Joe. Joe?
This is Scott, I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, Julie.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah.
I'll vote yes. Okay, any votes approved? All right, so next up, we have an A and R for Zero, we're E Street. Has everyone got a chance to take a look at this from the Dropbox? On the board here?
I did, I did have one question, which I guess, I don't know if we want to ask that now, or wait for, I don't know if anybody from that applicant is here. Do we have the applicant on?
This is Craig Sigunowski, room engineering, prepared the plan. So, the assessors have enlisted at Zero E Street, but the frontage is actually on Totten Avenue, Route 140, just north of E Street at the railroad. We have four lots, all having the minimum frontage of 150. It's in the R60 zone, so we have the minimum 60,000 square feet of upland on each lot, but actually quite a bit more in each lot. We have submitted and will be before you in the future meeting for a special permit for the common driveway that we're proposing. So the access across the four lots will be through the common driveway, and the building areas are where I have Lot 1, the words Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4. So, this, this plan would simply create the four lots that we would then submit for the special permit. And it does have the Meadowbrook Pond in it, obviously, we will be filing with Conservation at the time we do the special permit and for the building, the house construction as well.
Okay, so you're looking to just create these four lots?
We're just looking to get approval on the four lots, and then come back to you with the detailed plans for the common driveway.
Tim, you have a question, you said?
No question.
Tim, do you have a question? Okay. Anyone on the board have a question on this?
Yeah, Paul, have they filed the Form A?
Uh, yes.
Did you send it out with the material? I don't think I saw it.
Uh, did I? The, I don't see it, the Dropbox. It's not in there, okay. I'll check again.
The other thing is, I really couldn't make everything out, but do they, they look at all the wetlands and the permanent bodies of water on this? Is this all, they're all wet? I just can't, I can't tell where the deliations are? Are there any jurisdictional, is the law dictionary jurisdictional?
Uh, the, maybe the watering, the wetlands along the Meadowbrook Pond is flagged and the flags and the numbers of the flags are shown on the plan. As I said, the minimum lot, minimum required dry area, upland area, 60,000. The smallest lot has 169,000 square feet of upland area. So the lots do qualify for required upland area.
Question I have is, supposedly each lot has to be able to have access to the way. And in absence of that common driveway, I don't know that that's the case. Is that right?
Correct, but your, your bylaw allows for the use of a common driveway, because the purpose of it is for lots that do not have access through their frontage.
And, and I'm a little, and I don't know the answer, but the problem is, one is chicken and the egg. Because right now, if it doesn't have access without that common driveway, we can't give you an A and R. However, certainly you can go for the common driveway, I'm with it, you know, but that has limitations too. I don't know if that would be concerned with it. Obviously, you've got a land that has to get, you have to work with you in terms of moving around what you've got to make it work. But I'm just concerned in that, as it stands now, in absence of that common driveway, it doesn't appear that you have the appropriate access to the common, to the way, which is the conditions for an A and R. I'm not sure which, how we deal with that. Because right now, the, okay, you do have access, because the, between the pond, the pond, and I'm assuming the 100-foot buffer that you're going to have around it, you don't have any access to those roads.
All of those parcels have access on Totten Ave. Right, you see how they go like an L shape there? And that frontage, I can't see the top one, but the frontage should be enough, I believe.
Right, each lot has a minimum of the 150 minimum.
That's frontage, but, but.
But yeah, I hear what you're saying, without the common driveway.
They don't have access to that.
At least Lot 3 doesn't have actual access, Lots 1, you could justify 3 and 4.
Can I ask you this, Craig, I mean, is it possible to come back with both together? So we can deal with them, and I have no problem trying to work with you on doing it. The one issue I have with the common driveway, it's kind of long, and I think we have to make a determination that it's safe, reasonable access to fire, police, and emergency vehicles. Maybe you might want to talk to them and make sure they're okay with it.
You know, I agree, we have spoken to the fire department. Even when they were satisfied with what we did, but obviously, that's during the special permit process for the common driveway.
And, and Warren, we've, we've sent comments, we haven't heard anything back yet from, from fire on it.
Have they filed for a special permit, or they haven't filed?
Yes. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be on your July 14th meeting.
I'm just, I'm just asking, is it possible to hold, because we don't have the, well, you have the Form A, but I haven't seen it. Hold this off and bring the both up together? Would that make more sense, so we can be comfortable that you have that access? And we can deal with both at the same time? Because one doesn't, it doesn't help you have one with the other, we have the other anyway.
Correct, I don't have an issue, I mean, that is, what you're saying is correct. You could approve this plan July, we wouldn't have buildable lots without the common driveway, so.
I believe, I could be. Sorry, Craig, this is, just to Warren's point, I believe something we've discussed with other A and Rs is that there's a shorter timeline in terms of presumptive approval if we don't take action. I forget exactly what that timeline is, but I think, I mean, I think we're all getting on the same page here, it's a matter of what's the best way to proceed.
Typically, typically, an A and R has 21 days in which we have to hear it. But of course, with COVID-19 and the governor's order, everything had been, had been, had been frozen, so our thought was just start getting these going again. So just, we had thought, well, maybe if we could do them together, if we can knock out the A and R first, and then tackle the special permit.
Yeah, the lots aren't going to be buildable until we approve a special permit for the common driveway, so I don't see any reason we shouldn't move forward with this.
This is Joe. The only two requisites for an A and R is that it have frontage and adequate size. Whether it's buildable or not, that's a, that's a question for the building inspector ultimately. We're just creating lots, and there's no assurance of buildability. That being said, part of me wants to suggest that you do wait for the special permit, because if for some reason, and I, I can't predict how the planning board is going to react to the request for a special permit for the common drive, if the common drive gets reconfigured such that either A, it's not approved, B, there's only three lots, or some variation thereof, you're going to have to come back and redo the A and R.
So, I would say leave it up to the applicant if he wants to hold off, or?
Mr. Chair, this is Kevin, so I also agree with, with that part of Joe that feels that we may be putting the car before the horse, where without the approved common driveway, you know, how do we approve an A and R? Obviously, contingent of.
But if it has the frontage and the size, there's no reason not to approve the A and R, but, but I do understand what, what Warren, Joe was saying, yeah.
It also is the access to the way. And if in fact, the pond goes all the way to there, and there's a, it's within the 100, 100 feet of the, of the, of the waterways, I don't know that there is access to some of those lots.
Well, here again, you don't need access to any of it, you can, you can, in an A and R, create a landlot piece of land.
According to the definition of subdivision, it does require that you have the ability.
No, this is not a subdivision.
As you don't need a subdivision, provided you have access, you have the frontage and reasonable access to the property. Anyway, it'd be my suggestion, and I would recommend to the applicant, if they would be so kind as to agree to continue this, we'd be happy to bring it up at the same time, and I think it would make sense for everybody to do that.
My stand on this is, you know, I think, I think we're fine approving this tonight if, if the board, you know, would like. I'll leave it up to the applicant, what he wants to do.
Quick question, this is Scott. The lot, the lot lines, they're all shaped as an L, is that correct? And they're crossing a body of water, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So the frontage is a small subset of land separate from where the lot 1, 2, 3, 4 actually designated, is that true?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Yeah, in my opinion, that, that'll come into play when they, they're looking to build on it, or do the common driveway, but at this point, just the A and R splitting up the lot is, it has the frontage, it has the area, so I, I think this one's a no-brainer here.
And the body of water is part of the whole lot, right?
The body, yeah, the Meadowbrook Pond is contained completely inside the lot they own.
The, this lot's actually bigger, Craig, if I'm not mistaken, this lot actually goes a little bit beyond this, does it not?
Yeah, there's a detail on the bottom of the page that shows the remaining land going out to woodland, and then also, I believe, sort of touching this South Wester and Jackson Streets. That would just be part of the remaining land, Block 4.
Does the current lot have an address right now, Craig?
The assessors have this at Zero E Street.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm okay with either way. I couldn't really see the frontage with the L-shaped lot as it's drawn, but it appears, I guess, they're all over 150.
Yeah.
So either way, I'm good.
But again, I'll leave it up to the applicant, Craig, if you want to, if you want to hold off, or if you prefer going with this first, to the board.
I would say that, again, it doesn't, you're correct that if you gave us approval, but we don't have buildable lots until we have the common driveway. My client has to get the lots approved, obviously. So if, if the board is happy with signing it, I would, if you prefer to, I, I don't see, you're correct that it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, we will have four lots that we can't build on until we have a common driveway. Or we'll have one lot we could build on, and three lots we can't without the common driveway. So we will be coming before you with the common driveway. So if any board just feels comfortable signing the plan, I would be happy with that, but can also understand that you would prefer to hold off.
Anyone else on the planning board have any comments on this?
I have no comments, but I'll make a motion once, please, if anybody else that is on the meeting wants to say anything.
This is Scott, I have nothing more. Thank you, Scott. All right, Tim, you have a motion?
I would move to approve the A and R as submitted.
There a second?
This is Joe, I'll second.
Thank you, Joe, any further discussion, folks? Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Warren?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no? Warren?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes, and I will vote yes. So the A and R is endorsed, 6-1? Thank you, Craig, for your assistance.
Thank you, we'll see you in, in July.
Mr. Chairman, do you need any motion? I know we authorized a, a single signature for the A and R, do you need, that as part of the record?
Um, no, we just, what we need is just the, the motion to approve, and then, yeah. I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul.
Right, and just to let the board know, we did record that, just very recently, we recorded, we recorded that letter with the registry. So we're good to go, and in fact, the, the chair signed a couple things today.
Yeah, as, as long as it's approved by the board, then, then that goes into effect, at least for now.
Well, and I'll make sure the applicant gets the batch recorded letter as well, so, so they can file it, but it's with the registry, but this will just make it easier for them to record it.
Everybody gets a copy.
Yeah, working with signature.
Here, that good.
Thank you very much. So we have, let's see. Okay, the continued SB 490, a public hearing for 108 South Wester Street, Wading River Estates.
Just to, this isn't, the continuing issue of public hearing has been closed, that, correct?
Oh. I was reading the agenda. Yeah, we did, we did close it. On the agenda, it says continued, Paul. So this should just be the discussion.
The matter is continued, but not the public hearing aspect.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little confusing, because it's under public hearing, so, yeah, the matter's, this isn't a public hearing. Okay, this is the discussion about the potential vote. So you're trying to pull this all up here, Tim? So one thing that we've not really done in the past, but we probably should do is, rather than go line by line on conditions, I think we should, as a board, maybe discuss what are your kind of line of the sand conditions? Things that'll make you vote one way or the other, and see if we can get through those first. If that makes sense to everyone. Don't all jump on at once.
This is, Tim, I think, I mean, I think all my line in the sand conditions were addressed in the previous meeting, and have been incorporated into the plans, in terms of understanding the speed coming into the area, the stormwater with the adjacent lots. And from then on, I think the, the last tweak that we talked about with the layout was moving the mailbox, so there was actual parking around it, and I'm good.
Yeah, line of sight is a big one for me too, so. Anyone else want to chime in?
Can I ask that the last meet, that they were going before the Conservation Commission yesterday, according to their agenda, they weren't on the agenda, and I just found out with the status, just curiosity, whether or not the status of that is.
Well, I, I spoke to Jen Carlino, the Conservation Director. There, there's still some information regarding, there were alternatives for wetlands that they're, they need to get back completed. Jen did tell me, though, she thought this was looking good, and she doesn't expect any problems with it. But this was just some research data that they needed to provide, and it, they just didn't get, it wasn't between the applicant and the peer reviewer, the work wasn't completed in time for the last night's meeting. But she's actually pretty confident about this one getting approved. Well, I mean, obviously, that's up to CONCON, but Jen doesn't see major issues remaining.
Mr. Hornsby, is it appropriate for us to chime in and just to discuss what Paul just had to say?
No, at this point, you know, the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
So, yeah, we are.
I have one to ask for us, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Anyone, anyone else on the board?
Right now, there has been no storm permanent, storm management permit issued for this project, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
What we had was their proposed storm management proposal, is that what we're acting on? Or we're not acting at all on any storm management?
Well, this, this was brought up at the last meeting, and I had put in an email back to you, Paul, that there are criteria that Conservation, in our stormwater bylaw, that identifies when it, when it falls under the authority of a Conservation Commission, and when it falls under the Planning Board. One of the, one of the significant criteria is that developable area is more than an acre. And if it's more than an acre, it falls to Conservation Commission, so they then are responsible for issuing the, the decision and executing and enforcing the, the order, so.
I think that's correct.
And it's correct, and I brought this through the Conservation Director, they're assuming authority on this one, so.
That's fine, I understand it. Did, did, there was, you submitted, there was a draft revision of Chapter 143. Has that ever acted on back in August of 2019?
It, it has, that version has not been, but the information I had given you comes from the current version, which I don't remember when that went into effect, it was before my time, but that was taken right from you know, the approved, what's online, and what was approved by the Attorney General after town meeting.
What, what's the statement to that? I understand that they can take jurisdictional on water if they have their situation, and they have jurisdiction because of the wetland jurisdiction. Conservation Commission looks at, initially, they look at natural habitat. They don't look at residents, and they don't look at flooding of neighbor necessarily, because they're not concerned with that. We have that discretion. And my concern is in going forward, any of these, I understand that with they put up a fence, they, they, they put up a fence because they don't want animals to go under, they want to have animals to be able to walk freely. We might want, we might want a fence, because we don't want children to fall into a dangerous situation. Our, our agendas are not necessarily the same. We have beyond, beyond that of which Conservation has, and so from my perspective, I'm just a little cautious about just hearing, I don't know. And so from my perspective, I'm just a little cautious about just hearing, I don't know, they said they had some, it was wet before. We don't have the chance to ask the question. Well, is it enough so we can stop? We asked you to do something a little bit more so the people in flooding properties aren't going to get flooded. Can't ask that question. I'm not saying we would have had to do that, I'm not saying that the Conservation, they could, they couldn't make them do that because that's not their standard. But in, in a, in a special permit, we have additional things beyond which they otherwise are required to do. And I just think this board, uh, even, even before we make a decision, takes away some of the discretion and input that we should, as a board, be considering. I'm not saying we should do it, but there's things such as that, that we have the right to ask for. We can ask for off-site radiation, we can have off-site remediation, and that is not a, that is, with that bylaw, but it's understanding how much of that, you know, they've addressed, and what else could be done without, you know, burdening that side too much, uh, to address some of the concerns of the neighbors. And I, I think that's what our function is, and that's one of the concerns I have, which is sign law on this in advance. We've done that, I understand it. The other question I have, I just had another question, was, did they ever see a landscaping plan? I was looking through the plans that I've seen, and I didn't see one, it's the one that you submitted.
Yeah, they had updated it, uh, as part of their last review. Uh, it was toward, I want to say it was like, uh, page C14 or 15, but they didn't provide it.
And then they were going to replace all the other veggies.
Yeah, right. Because they're not deer resistant.
And I believe there was some additional screening one occurred, that I, I don't know if that's ever came up. I don't know if that, you addressed that. At the last meeting, one of the, one of the butters asked that they extend some string along the curb. I'm not sure what curb you're talking about.
Along the, uh, I think the wall, uh, the neighbor to the, I want to say to.
The bottom right.
The bottom right to the south of, of the property.
In, in terms of must have for myself, um, I, I would want to make the conditions that the order of conditions and the cer- and the stormwater management permit must be issued, and that any order of conditions that imposes conditions inconsistent with the site plan shall require a revision of the site plan. That's part of the, the bylaw, our, our bylaw. I'd like to see those two things in it. In addition to, um, language calling for prior to the issuance of a building permit, uh, the project, uh, in, in the project, a proper regulatory agreement and permanent deed restriction, including without limitation, those limitations required under 175 1912, a one-time survival foreclosure, be prepared and provided to the planning board, and that be reviewed by the town council and approved by the planning board. And at the same, be applied to the con- that suitable kind of minimum asset deed and kind of being in trust documents be prepared, uh, and provided for the planning board, and that be reviewed by town council and approved by the planning board. And the other thing was, the, also, prior to the issuance of the permit, um, a deed conveying, I'll call it the finger parcel, uh, I'm not sure what you mean, rectory to, uh, going to the butters, preserving the need of easements to utilities, be formally due by town council, approved by the planning board.
Orrin, can I ask when you, what afterwards, or are you, would you be able to forward or e-mail those to me, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Are you anyone else? Okay, Paul, do we have a list of the, the conditions, the general ones on here in the drop box?
Uh, I, I thought we, I thought I saw one for this, but, um, I could be wrong. You had an older, you had a, a, a special permit for, uh, the Oak Street, uh, brought by, that was similar to this. But we would incorporate a lot of the, you know, the current conditions that we put in, like hours of operation for construction, uh, that, those sorts of things. You know, this has to be recorded at the registry, but we're looking for anything, like what, what Orrin has mentioned, but anything in addition to the usuals. I can always pull up a previous one if that, a pre- you know, a more recent decision, if that helps.
Um, that, what do, what do folks say? Is there any other, um, again, like I said, line, line in the sand items that, uh, that folks want to discuss?
I think Paul just mentioned it, but hours of operating of construction, given the nature of that neighborhood, seems like one that we should, maybe look at to a degree.
Yeah, I think in, in the past, this board has been pretty much on the same page as far as that's concerned. We've been able to kind of agree on that, so, uh, I'm not too concerned about that one. I, I'm more along lines, thinking of anything that's going to, you know, sway a vote yes or no, um, so we can kind of work it out now and, and then potentially have a vote on this tonight.
I can, can, can we please see a decision? I mean, we're, we're talking about what our major changes are, but, like, I don't want to, I, myself, I'm not going to vote until I see a formal decision. I'm not going to do that. My vote would be no if you ask for it now. It's enough already, I mean, I don't know why we had, I don't know why we had to go forward with closing the hearing before hearing from Conservation. Having done that, I certainly don't want to sign off vision before it's actually drafted. I don't think that's appropriate for us to do that as a board, and I'm not going to do it.
What we've done, this is Joe, what we've done in the past, let me, uh, touch on a couple things. I've taken my meds this week, so I, I won't be as, as ammited in my, uh, concern over stormwater as it was last time. But we have a bylaw that addresses, I didn't write the bylaw, although the planning board I was on, at the time, the planning board had, had, uh, the ability to provide, provide input on the stormwater bylaw. Our bylaw for stormwater says if there are, and I, I slightly disagree, and I may be wrong, Paul. It's not simply that it's an acre, um, of disturbance and thus it defaults to Concom. An acre requires a stormwater permit, but under the bylaw, if there are wetlands or there is other, there are other jurisdictional matters for the Conservation Commission, then the stormwater review falls to the Conservation Commission.
Right, yes, yes.
Absent, uh, Conservation Commission jurisdiction, uh, for wetlands or riverfront or whatever else would trigger Concom's involvement, absent that, stormwater falls to the planning board. That being said, we either abide by the bo- bylaw, whether I agree with, with the bylaw or not as a materiality point, it's, it's a matter of record. Um, what was frustrating to me last time around, we were, we were, um, reticent to close the public hearing because we hadn't finalized on stormwater, or the Concom hadn't finalized on stormwater. While we haven't finalized on, you know, the, the, the structural aspects of the buildings either. That doesn't fall to us, it falls to the building inspector. We have to start making decisions within our jurisdiction. Jurisdiction in this particular case doesn't fall to the board, uh, the planning board. And so that, that's my two cents worth on, on stormwater. As to pers- proceeding forward, there's nothing that prevents us from approving this or any other project subject to a review of the draft conditions. We've mentioned, and Orrin's mentioned some, um, Paul, when you write up a decision, and frankly, it makes no sense to write up a decision only to have potentially the project defeated. To me, it makes sense to approve or disapprove a project, um, subject to review of the conditions as they're drafted. Um, and frankly, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the project as submitted, subject to the conditions that have been discussed pending a review of the, the draft conditions.
Hey Joe, Scott, a quick question for you.
Yes.
What does the review of those draft conditions look like post, uh, approval?
Well, I mean, some of the things, Paul, I'm sorry.
Is it a formal review? Is it done with the board? Does it require a repo? I, I'm just curious how that typically would work.
It, it would, we would have, at our next meeting, we would go through the conditions, uh, during the meeting, one by one. Um, and if, yeah, and, and we would cha- you know, if there was something that we were, um, you know, some people were for, some people were against, then we would vote on those specific conditions. But, yeah, it would come, it would come back at the next meeting.
Again, this is Joe, I think probably the easiest one to, to understand, obviously, there are going to be hours of operation. Yeah, I'm just making this up. If, if Paul were to write up, uh, as part of the conditions, that operations are from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, while we may have issues with that, and we would probably would refine those, but the project would still go forward, subject to that, that refinement in term, in, in that particular case, hours of operation. Um, but.
I can't disagree with you more, and I'm going to tell you why, okay? First of all, assuming that, uh, would be a majority vote, as opposed to if it's a particular, uh, decision that requires a super majority, that no longer would apply. Two, I don't know, I mean, I've sat here and trying to figure out some major things, I haven't gone through the whole, whole, the whole litany of, of the project and just closed the hearing, you have 90 days to come up with a decision. And part of that decision is understanding all the things Paul's going to put into it that may raise other issues that I didn't know about, or I forgot about, I didn't look at. And all those things go into making a decision, and I might want to put in additional conditions, and if, if I felt strongly enough, I might then want to not, not vote for it, or at least make sure everybody understood what those were. Right now, you're just saying, well, okay, let's decide it, and we're going to view it, and we're assuming everything's going to be this, this, this off-the-shelf, uh, decision, and we'll, we'll tweak it going back and forth with the majority vote. That's, that's delegating what we, our responsibility is. That's, Paul, right the decision, and basically, we're changing it from a super majority to a majority vote, and I don't think that's appropriate for this board to do.
Well, w- with all respect, this has been in front of us for how many months now? I mean, we, we've had all this material, and everything we've asked of them, they've, they've changed, they've corrected, they've fixed, they've, they've done everything we've asked of them. I, I, I think, you know, we've run into this a few times in the past where we owe it to these folks to, to have a vote. I don't think, and, and one of the reasons why I brought up initially, you know, if there was anything like a red line, you know, anything that would cause you to vote yes or no on, I wanted to bring that up now. Okay, just to avoid a situation, like you said, turning it from a simple majority to a simple majority. So, I mean.
With all due respect, the reason we, was argued to go through with the decision was fear of losing people on a, on a, as a candidate election. And they did that before, and we did it again this time.
That was absolutely not my reasoning for wanting a vote, so.
Eight days to make a decision. You don't have a week, you have 90 days, at least they give you 90 days, so you can see a draft decision. So Paul could put together all of the things that go into what we've reviewed, so we have a chance to review those again. That's the, that's the process we should be following in coming up with a reasonable decision. There's no week, he, he doesn't have a, a conservation permit, so what's the rush now for us to get, give up that, that, the ability to look at this, you know, reasoned approach in, in over a week? He's not even going to the Conservation Commission before that. So you're saying, well, okay, you've been putting him off. We haven't been putting him off. We have, that's the provision we have, after closing the meeting, to write a decision, a, a recent decision based upon all of the information. We're not doing that now, and I, I, I really, I, I think that's a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I, I made a motion, I'm, I'm prepared to modify it such that, uh, the conditions, uh, when they are reviewed require a super majority, but otherwise, there's a motion on the table, I don't know if there's going to be a second.
I don't know, I don't know if we can do that, but we'll put that in the motion, um, and check with council to make sure we can do that, but, is there a second on that motion? Uh, Julie, I, I think you said yes, but, uh, your phone broke up.
Yes, this is Julie, I'll second Joe's motion.
There you go.
Discussion?
Yeah, yeah, okay Orrin.
That is, you put forward a condition. It requires a special, a special majority to approve it. Or if I want a condition that you guys, that, that a majority doesn't want, the super majority doesn't help me. It doesn't help the member of the board. Almost is reverse. It's in order to impose a condition via super majority. So unless you're saying the re- the ultimate, the final decision is subject to another vote of this, of the super majority, um, that doesn't work on each condition. So this is almost works to the reverse. I want a condition, I, I need to get a super majority to approve the condition as opposed to approving the project.
Just to reiterate what I said, I don't think that we are able to do that, but I, I, I wanted to keep Joe's motion as it is and check what council put on. Yeah, that's the motion on the table, so, um, any further discussion? Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orrin? Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Chair, uh, I, I didn't hear Orrin's.
I'm sorry.
Orrin? No, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, special permit is approved. Uh, six to one?
I'm just trying to review the conditions.
Yeah, do you have, do you have, uh, the wording for that, Paul, or Nicole, just to make sure we got it clear? The wording of that motion?
Uh, I'm getting, getting what I think I heard, uh, through, sorry.
Yeah, when you get it down, just, just read it so Joe can make sure that's, that's correct. Okay, so the motion to approve, uh, subject to, uh, the, uh, I essentially understand this as conditions must be approved, it's going to come back. Let me just rephrase this. They, they, it's, it's going to come back, the decision needs to come back for you all to review the dra- uh, the, the, the draft decision, and that has to be approved by a super majority.
Right. Okay.
So mo- so a motion to approve pending conditions, uh, which must be approved by a super majority, I, I, I would like to make sure you, you check with council to make sure we can do that. I want to make sure we're doing it all right, but, um, is that, is that right, Joe, the, uh, motion?
Okay. Scott?
If, if you look at a super majority on the conditions, it's approved without conditions?
There has to be a super majority approving whatever final document compromises of a, uh, whatever final condition.
Compries.
Compries, thank you, Tim, comprises the final, the, uh, draft decision.
Means we're going to have to work together to make sure that we get a super majority approval.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, my.
No different, no different than if Paul had the conditions, if Paul were clairvoyant and had written up, and I wish you were Paul at times, uh, if Paul had written up all the anticipated conditions, we'd still have to approve that by a super majority. Now, whether we, in the, the back and forth of a, a particular condition, whether it has to be a super majority or a simple majority, the draft final decision, or the final decision, has to be a super majority.
Right, well, um, I think the applicants are still on, so thank you guys very much.
You're very welcome, Mr. Chairman, and, and Mr. Board, thank you so much for your help and your time and your consideration for this project, and we look forward to, uh, working with you again on our next project.
All right, so now we have, uh, a very patient applicant from Condyne, with SP 493, at 10 Commerce Way Edition.
Uh, good evening, Mark did with Condyne Engineering Group, so believe Jeff O'Neil is on.
Correct, Mark.
Where'd he go?
I'm here.
He's listed as Condyne Web Hall, so Jeff O'Neil with Condyne is also on. Um, tonight, we have before you a special permit for, uh, at 10 Commerce Way. Um, what's going on at 10 Commerce Way is, we basically have a 100% leased building, um, a few, a couple tenants need some additional space. building, um, a few, a couple tenants need some additional space, so we have T-Mobile, that has a significant, um, piece of the building, needs additional space in the future that, uh, we have permitting for, as well as, uh, Precision for Medicine needs, um, additional space at the other end of the building. So on the plans, you'll see the, um, the two additions at the end of this existing building are for those two tenants, one for T-Mobile and one for Precision Medicine.
Mark, Mark?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I can share, I can put that online, and do you guys, do you all have the presentation too? You could share it if you want, if you want to.
Um, if you have it handy, that sheet four of the PDF.
Okay, let me, uh, let me get there.
I would have it too, if, uh.
Hi, everyone.
Was that, Mark, is that the layout plan you sent today?
Yes, that'll work.
Okay. Um, I'm putting it up right now.
Okay, so I'll just use, uh, right and left on the plan, so, um, T-Mobile, it has the unit on the left end, and we're proposing a, a ten thousand square foot addition. And then on the right, um, existing is Precision for Medicine, as well as two smaller tenants, Outlaw Audio and Morton Builders. Um, so Precision for Medicine would take that entire end of that building on the right side, including the addition we're proposing. And then our goal is to then relocate the other two tenants, Outlaw Build, Outlaw Audio and Morton Builders, to a new building at the south side of the property. Uh, that's the new building down in the corner. So we're making room for expansion on the site, which is a good thing nowadays, to have this, um, opportunity to expand for these businesses. Um, what we've also submitted is, so we've submitted for a special permit for any, uh, use over ten thousand square feet. Um, we are providing a parking lot, bottom left corner of the property, to offset the parking spaces lost by that addition above that, as well as we are providing a loading area and parking spaces for the new building in back, and will continue to maintain the parking spaces around the other addition for Precision, uh, Medicine. We've also designed, um, a drainage system for the new roof area, the new, um, loading area, and the new parking areas. We've, uh, designed recharge systems and a drainage basin for those, and we've just slightly reconfigured driveways and things like that around the building, uh, access is actually better. The, the corner to the left, near T-Mobile, is a wider access now, and the other access at the other end of the building has not changed, so, um, access is either the same or better around the building. We, utilities, we will, um, work off of available existing utilities, there's a gas lot, existing gas behind the building, uh, water, as shown on the plans, will have to come from Commerce Way, uh, for the new building. Additions do not require any kind of outside utility work for that. We have, Amory Engineer has, has reviewed the project for drainage, and they've, uh, supplied a letter today on the drainage design, as well as we, Paul, if you could just scroll up on the slide bar. There you go. So we also had a, uh, a letter from Conservation, um, that requested us to locate wetlands. The initial filing was based on the pond, which is off to the right of the screen, the wetland, um, to the right of the screen was a pond area, and, um, all right. That's okay, this is the flags on the right, um, which we were a hundred feet, any work was a hundred feet outside the buffer, but what has also been determined is that the drainage ditch that, which is that arm-looking, um, piece that runs towards Commerce Way, is also hydraulically connected, even though it is a drainage ditch with, with Commerce Way runoff, as well as other site runoff coming into it, that is classified as a wetland. Um, and therefore, we are in the middle of, uh, filing an RDA for this project, and the RDA is because there's, um, literally just hundreds of, um, three hundred square feet of work of, of the building addition that is in that, but it also includes, is actually a net gain of green area, and there's absolutely no work on the outer limits of the project near the hundred-foot buffer. Um, so there's, you know, there's only work in board of existing parking, um, and my environmental consultant feels that an RDA is, uh, should be sufficient for this project that would find a, a negative finding that a permit is required for conservation. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think, you know, in, in addition to that, just so everyone knows, the, the T-Mobile expansion is part of their data center, SWIP Center, so, uh, they've expanded already in two pods in the building, this would potentially be the third. Those are heavy capital investments, um, that provide an enormous amount of taxes to the, down, down in Norton, excuse me. And then ProMedics, which is the, up at the other end, which is further known as Precision Medicine now, they're already outgrowing their space, so they have taken space in the adjacent industrial park in Taunton, so we're trying to maximize what they can grow here on-site, without losing them, uh, as they continue to grow internally. So, and then the, the outbuilding really is a replacement growth of both Morton and Outlaw, which are in the adjacent small two-tenant group, just south of wherever our Precision Medicine is. So, as Mark said, we're pretty fortunate, um, as you know, Norton Commerce Center, these three flex buildings have always done very well, we've never missed an occupancy as far as leasing goes, the problem is, we're out of space. So we're trying to do everything in our power to keep the tenants in Norton, and allow them to continue long-term growth.
I'm ready to open up if anybody has questions at this point.
Um, anyone on the board with questions?
This is, uh, Tim. Mark, you mentioned offsetting the parking, um, is it net breakeven, is there any up or down in terms of the parking available? I know with coronavirus, parking at work is different now, so, but we still have to hit the, what our bylaws say, so.
Um, a net or gain or loss, I don't have in front of me, I'll get that, give me a minute on that. What we do currently, um, we're proposing a hundred and fifty-eight spaces, and zoning requires a hundred and three. Um, one thing that, the T-Mobile space is mostly equipment, does not create a lot of employees, it may create a, one or two, but, um, based, and we, and we know the history use of the parking lot, so, I mean, we are comfortable with spaces, but I can, I can just do a quick tally while other, uh, questions are going on.
Yeah, there's a lot of people want a data center, there's a problem.
Yeah.
But still set based on the square footage, right?
Yes, the required spaces, yes.
Anyone else?
Um, Paul, can, can you confirm, is this project in a zone two?
Paul was gonna research that a, a little bit more, but we, we've seen in the past, and in fact, for Almylam and Penske, um, one of the wells in Taunton was abandoned, and Taunton officials confirmed that they were no longer creating the zone two. Um, but Paul, Paul mentioned to me that he would confirm through DEP with that, um.
Yeah, because, uh, I, I included our latest zone three, or zone three with three maps, and it showed zone two covering this. So, um, when I pointed, pointed that out to Mark, they revised their application, will apply for a special permit for zone two, so, uh, but took, they're out of the, you know, abundance of caution. Um, you know, we, he and I talked earlier, or emailed earlier today, I'll reach out to DEP, but our data showing that that area being within, right on the edge of zone two. So, uh, you know, this, uh, they can go more into some of the, you know, what they're storing there, but, uh, you know, certainly, when you're in zone two, you have to have a minimum lot of eighty thousand, they're way above that, they need to be able to show that they're not creating any adverse impacts to water quality or quantity. Um, and I, I see Pat Brennan, our peer reviewer is on, he can talk about that. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that it wasn't, you know, it, I, I don't, you know, being in zone two, it, it did cause the creation of a new special permit, but we wanted to be cautious about that.
Have they filed a new special permit, because there wasn't one posted?
Yeah, they filed the special permit for zone three, uh, zone two.
Did you post it?
That's all, yeah.
I believe so, we can look into that, Paul, I.
I think that was posted maybe pre-COVID, is that maybe the?
Well, the original application was, was just for, um, ten thousand square feet, it wasn't for zone two. They actually said it wasn't zone two in their application.
But that was, but that had been amended.
Yeah, it was months ago, I believe.
Yeah.
I guess, um, the, the letter that Conservation had sent questioned whether or not the new, um, previous cover will be directed to the new infiltration bases and not the existing system? So, um, I, I know on the two, on the new building, the little parking lot, you've got some infiltration systems, but what about the additions? Now, are those, are those tied into the existing system or the, or the new system?
The additions are, um, we're basically removing parking lot that is already draining to the existing system, and replacing it with the roof runoff, so it's actually, in a way, um, replacing the parking runoff with clean roof runoff, but in that, the roof runoff of the two additions is going to the existing system for a trade-off of the existing pavement that we're removing.
And, uh, still, I'm, I'm, I'm not clear, uh, are you required to go before Conservation? Do we have jurisdictional issues with roof, with this maybe one of them?
We, we have extremely minimal work within the hundred-foot buffer to the drainage ditch that is hydraulically connected to the pond. So, in a roundabout way, technically, we do.
But, uh, the information that was, uh, that appeared to indicate that you couldn't tie into the existing system with your roof, and that's all I have to go on. Um, I don't know whether the peer reviewer, um, wants to tie into that or not. He also, they also raised that in their letter, talking about, it was unclear whether you were tying into the existing system, but apparently you are. So I guess, for me, that's the question, and I don't know whether Jennifer has responded any further to that, Paul, or whether or not the peer reviewer can address that issue.
Um, excuse me, uh, Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers, um, I did peer review the project for, for the board. As Mark indicated, the, the roofs from the two additions are tying into the existing system, um, but they are replacing, for the most part, existing parking areas, so, um, as Mark alluded to, in, in my eyes, um, it's, it's a better situation, because you're, you're introducing clean roof runoff to that system in place of essentially dirty parking lot runoff. But it's.
Have you seen, uh, Jennifer's letter and the reference she had to the statue?
I, I did not see that, no.
But we, we do intend to go to Conservation, so we will, if there's, you know, it'll be worked out.
Okay, um, then, I, I'm not, the, for the new buildings, I really couldn't tell how you, what kind of infiltration system you have. You have something to the right of the new building, that looks like it's, um, that's a runoff for the roof, and that's a, a, a surface, surface infiltration system? And then to the left, you have a, like, underground infiltration systems, or under the parking lots, you have some systems, so, uh, those are?
Correct.
Orin, can you tell me what map you're looking at, please, so I can put it up?
Uh, sheet five.
Sheet five?
The grading, grading and utility plan.
Okay, there, there's a provision in the, under zone two, uh, section fourteen five point six, that says groundwater and surface recharge must be provided, which does not degrade the same. Recharge shall be by form of stormwater infiltration basins, or similar systems covered by natural vegetation. Dry wells shall be only where other methods can feasible. Um, is, is that, does that address, is that what you're using now? Is that a, a system that would trigger the inquiries, whether anything else is feasible?
Um, I, we, we're meeting stormwater management standards, even for the zone two. It, 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 could it be possible to get it into some sort of rain garden prior to, which is the, you know, on the surface treatment you're talking about? It, it could be, um, but I, as far as the stormwater management standards, if we, you know, we meet those, and even for zone two, maybe Pat Brennan can speak to that, or prove me wrong.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, um, the, they are, um, the TSS removal rates are, um, they actually, in, in their worksheet, they show that it's eight, nine percent, but they only took thirty percent credit for the proprietary stormwater treatment units that they proposed. And those typically give you closer to eighty percent removal credit, um, so this, the system that they proposed, uh, provides that ninety percent that your bylaw requires, which is also, um, required within zone two to clean that stormwater as much as possible prior to discharge to an infiltration system. They also provide, um, if I'm not mistaken, you, at least four feet of separation of groundwater from the bottom of those infiltration systems, um, which is also required when you have rapid infiltration rates, um, sandy soils like we have here. So they are meeting the stormwater standards when it comes to both infiltration, as well as stormwater quality for cleaning the stormwater prior to infiltration.
But that adjusts the, the requirement we have under the water resource provision. And, and I guess the question, you, you also mentioned, in your own letters, there was something about they needed to have eighteen inches clearance, as opposed to they all had sixteen inches clearance, have they addressed that?
Um, yeah, um, I, I did submit, um, Mark and I were going back and forth today with some final revisions, um, but the, they only had about a half foot of cover over that infiltration system that you see kind of in the bottom center of the screen there, in that parking loading area associated with the proposed new building. That was previously located a little bit more to the right, um, so they've revised the grading in that area, and also lifted that system another half a foot to provide that eighteen inches of, uh, cover over that. The cover is just essentially, because you have vehicular traffic on top of that, um, those plastic chambers, and they require a minimum of eighteen inches of cover to, to, uh, support that vehicular loading lift on top of it, so they provided that with this revised plan that you see in front of you right now.
Is that shown somewhere, um, is it on the plan, or?
Um, well, if you, if you look close, and you probably can't read it on that plan, but the bottom of that infiltration system is listed at elevation seventy-three. Um, the system itself is three and a half feet in depth, so the top of that system is seventy-six and a half, and the minimum grade over that is seventy-eight and a half, so you have two feet of cover over.
Is that the same for both, or just the one, right?
That, that's that one, the one and the other in the, in the proposed new parking The one and the other in the, in the proposed new parking area to the left, that had twenty a couple over, even on the first iteration.
Okay. So I guess, Paul, maybe you can inquire with Jennifer, whether or not our Zone, Zone Two water resource requirement is something they address, even though it's not part of, right now, it's under our bylaws. I don't know that it falls under their jurisdiction. I just want to make sure that they're aware of that and they can address it. The other question I have is on circulation. Your plan doesn't show any real dimensions that I could see relative to the distances for vehicle circulation. And also, I'd like to know what the driveway entrance is. What's the dimension of driveway entrance?
Um, I can add those to the plan. It's, we're using the existing circulation and driveway entrances.
Do you know, driveway, is that fifty feet or does it comply with the current bylaw? Do you know?
Give me one second. I do have it open in front of me. The width, the, where the radiuses hit Commerce Way, it is about fifty feet. And then the width of the driveway for that short distance before you get to the parking lot is about thirty feet. So, and that's an existing driveway that's been accessed by trucks and vehicles for, since it was built in eighty-nine or ninety.
Have we heard from the police department, Paul? In terms of their comfort with the radius returning? I think you said that it is.
Did you say police or did you mean fire?
Oh, fire, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Fire reviewed this and their, the deputy chief did not have any issues. And some of their issues will just be picked up during the building permits.
I'm looking at this, you put that plan back up?
Sure.
Is there? Is there any walkway between the new parking area on the left and the new building? For any of the other buildings? Are there any sidewalks?
That's the stormwater plan. Is there, is there a better plan to look at for that?
Uh, no, that, that's, that plan's okay. There is no sidewalk for the new parking lot, so the bottom left parking lot. There's also, I don't believe there's any sidewalks for any of those parking spaces at the end of the building.
There's no, Mark, there's no sidewalks on the property. There's walkways from parking direct into the lease spaces. Sidewalk is located on Commerce Way out in the driveway, out in the roadway.
I believe the site plan, does anybody have, I had asked Paul for it. Do you have any chance to have the original site plan and the original order of conditions for the site? Does anybody have that?
Well, you have access to Sheet Two, Paul. I think, I think I could probably share it if you know.
You can go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Okay, so this is the existing conditions survey. For instance, the only, does my cursor show up?
Yes.
The only sidewalks are just, you access through the driveway and they're these short pieces. There's a sidewalk there. All they do is, the entire building, around the entire building, you have to, you know, walk the road. And then there's a sidewalk in, sidewalk in, again, a sidewalk in. So there is essentially no sidewalks except the perpendicular access right to the door itself.
Paul, do you have the earlier nineteen eighty-four plan that you sent to me? Is that your, your site plan?
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, I, I, I put it in your Dropbox. So let me, let me find that.
Hi, everyone.
This should, this should do it.
Paul, you weren't able to find the order of conditions, the original order of conditions to this, Paul?
No, no, this, this plan actually goes back to nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-four. But no, I wasn't able to, to, to find it.
Yeah, I believe, from looking at that plan, it did call for a concrete sidewalk, significant one all the way around the right, at least the right hand side. I believe the left hand side as well. The other question I had is also, is there a landscaping plan?
The landscaping is shown on the layout plan. Essentially just adding minimal plantings to in front of the new building. The rest of the site is already developed with plantings. Or for instance, the parking lot down in the bottom left will be surrounded by natural vegetation. So we've really only provided minimal, some minimal landscaping in front of the building.
Is it comply with the landscaping statute, Article eighteen six? I don't, I couldn't tell from, you just have, you listed a couple of, I'm not sure what plantings you have there. It had some listing of on top what it was, but you didn't show where they were. You got a plan?
It's, the, the small circles right in front of the new building are those plants. And we technically don't have any new driveways or roadways. So we don't have any shade tree requirement or any kind of, you know, bordering site requirements. So it was more of an aesthetic landscape plan.
But what about in the driveway, in the parking lot itself? I'm not sure what the requirements are for a parking lot with two, with two levels. Are there required to be more, more trees than you have there? I don't know. Under the landscaping, Article eighteen, I think it is? Eighteen point six. Take a look at that and just see, if you're thinking to qualify for something else, that's fine. I just, I couldn't find, I didn't see a plan that showed any, any kind of plantings. And I couldn't tell what you had going in. Is, you're saying the, the new space obviously is not visible by anywhere, anyone on Commerce Way. This is an existing tenant that's going to be expanding into that space? Is that, is that correct, Joe?
Pretty much, Orin. All three expansions are by existing tenants.
Is there going to be some special signage for these people? So they have some identity upfront or is that?
The signage is already located. There's beautiful monuments that have been installed on each of the properties as you go up Commerce Way.
Okay. And there's, so it'll be the same tenant, tenants?
Same tenants, yes. That's right. Anyone else with questions?
Yeah. Yep, yep. That nineteen eighty-four plan that you just mentioned, that, that, that used to be a Mazda motors, that used to be a Mazda motor part distribution sort of for years. And now it's Ford Eckenroth, right?
Anyone else on the board with questions on this?
I have none. This is Tim. Do we, are we looking to continue this next meeting while we make sure we know we're in a Zone Two and everything's good or?
Deputy Dito. Sorry. Yeah, I think we were looking to continue it. I would say again that, you know, based on the criteria for the special, for a special permit for Zone Two, you know, they, you know, it would just be your decisions based on, you know, if you believe that they are adequately protecting water resources. And in fact, Mark, I don't know if you mentioned, what are you storing there?
It's existing, Paul, it's existing tenants. So you got a, a T-Mobile data center. You have ProMedics, their existing requirements are already there. You have Morton Buildings and, and Alvar Audio. So there's nothing really different than what's already on site. So, and I guess on our side is, you know, understanding we've all been through a lot in the past regarding COVID and everything else, but we've been waiting patiently ninety days to get this moving forward. And right now, we already have a tenant that's moving to the adjacent industrial park. All right, so anyone else on the board with questions?
This is Joe. I just want clarification. You're filing an RDA with Conservation Commission, assuming, again, I'm just anticipating the next shoe to drop. I want to make sure that if ConCon's going to deal with stormwater, they deal with stormwater. If we're going to deal with stormwater, we deal with stormwater. But I'm not waiting thirty seconds as a planning board member for what the ConCon's going to do if they don't have jurisdiction. So I just want to make sure that I understand an RDA will be filed. Depending on their response will determine who has jurisdiction for stormwater. Am I correct, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Armory's already done a review of all of that stuff for us, so I respect that that's done.
And Pat did it pursuant to stormwater, the stormwater management bylaw, in addition to, you know, professional engineering standards.
Right, but they won't need a stormwater permit because they're not clearing that acre.
Yeah, I, 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 that's my understanding. It might be more of a wetlands issue.
Right.
Those underground infiltration systems are applicable. Basically, from my perspective, yeah, I think what we have is an notification from the conservation that there is an issue that they think needed to be addressed. I'd be just concerned that they, as long as they're addressing it, it's fine. I want to make sure that somebody is.
So, so I guess then I'd look for a motion to either continue or to approve?
I would move to the, to the, to the other day.
I didn't catch that.
The other day, we continue to?
Believe, July fourteenth is your next meeting?
Is that work for the applicant?
That's the next meeting, Dan. I guess that's all we can do. Is the motion to continue the, the next meeting, July fourteenth? Is there a second? I missed that. Who was that?
That was Joe. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, Julie.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So we continue to the fourteenth. Thank you, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
We don't have any further business, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the Hong Kong Junior, oh, the Planning Board meeting?
Can I ask a question before we adjourn?
Yeah, go ahead, Orin, I'm sorry.
Paul, I'm, I'm just, I want to just get a clarification. This, this was filed back in February. In that, since that time, a lot has gone on. I don't think anything has been sent to us at all. We haven't seen anything on this. I don't know. We haven't, we haven't really been asked to approve a peer review or whether a peer review is going to be happening. I just want to know, what's the process supposed to be? I was surprised they're getting it at this point with, you know, all of the thing that's done. It may be good, good, good practice, but I don't know what policy is going to be.
Right.
I think we talked about that right before everything shut down. And that we met upstairs and at that point, we'd said that peer review would move forward, not let jazz. But I agree that it was a little bit of a, whoa, there's all this information.
So also keep in mind, this actually, this application came in before everything shut down. So what Town Council had asked us to do was for those applications to ask for voluntary ninety degree, not ninety degree, ninety day. So they agreed to do it, unlike actually Wading River, which said, we don't, we want to keep going forward. And we'll, you know, and that was within their rights. So that's why, so ninety days was bringing us right to now with, with ten commerce. So in the interim, though, we were going forward with our reviews. We got the peer review done. We had our staff review. And so there was a lot of back and forth with Mark, trying to get this in. You know, we were hoping we were going to get it sooner than we did, but, but that's all. We were, we weren't, we didn't want to just be inactive with any of these applications.
That brings up a good, that brings up a good point. And Orin, thank you for bringing it up too. We all decided as a board a while ago to have a seven day for the meeting. We should have this stuff turned into a seven days in advance. So things that are coming in same day or the, you know, day before, I think we need to just continue them. I think it's unfair for the board to have to go through all this information quickly. And that could lead to bad decisions, you know, and nobody wants that. So, so I think going forward, stop me if I'm wrong, folks, but something the same day or even the day before, we need to just continue it because it's on the agenda. That's my thought on it. We all discussed this at length, I think, so. Uh, that's my thought on it. Uh, we, we all discussed this at length and things, so.
And, you know, just, as a summary, and when I get information, I want to get it to you as quickly as possible. Uh, but, you know, in this case, we were, comments were made a long time ago. And I actually had asked, do you have to give me the information so I can get it to you last week?
Yeah. So, so, so going, I mean, something like that, I, I feel like there's always something that, that comes in last minute. And something like that, if you asked for it two weeks ago and you didn't get it till today, well, then we continue it and we don't waste our time on it during the meeting. Um, these meetings run long as it is and, and they have to go through this information while we're on with these, these folks. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to us, so. Um, you know, I think we, we really need to start sticking to that. You know, if they have something to turn in, they need to turn it in, uh, in, in advance. Seven days, I think the board said.
Seven days, your policy, yes?
Yeah. So I think we need to start sticking to that policy. So.
Or at least using it as a threat.
Yeah. Yeah, not so much a threat, but you know, I, I guess kind of, um, you know, if, if you don't get it to a seven days in advance, then we're just going to continue it.
Well, and I should point out, I had an email exchange with Mark. He asked, well, should we continue it? And I just thought, well, at least put it on here so you all get to see it, ask your questions. And if you continue it, you're no worse off, but at least you were able, everyone was able to get their, get their issues out there, what you know for tonight. So I didn't want to continue it. I mean, we have other things that have been backed up and, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I didn't want to, I didn't want to just automatically ask for a continuance tonight. Just give you a chance to, uh, you know, to, to hear the presentation.
I, I'm not, please, Paul, don't take this as me blaming you by any means.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I mean, that's on, that's on me as well. I mean, that's something that I should have immediately just said, you know, we got this yesterday or this morning. Uh, we need to continue this and, and review it. Um, so just going forward, that's, I think, what I'm, I'm going to do, um, unless anyone has any.
The, the, I, 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 I agree with that. The, the question I was asking i- is like, um, we certainly may not want to start a public hearing, but certainly if someone's filed, uh, for a permit, uh, should it be posted? And if it's posted and we look at it, is that, do we, we have an obligation to start? I mean, I wanted to, we, we help to look if we can track what, what this is going on in the project, even though we haven't started an open hearing.
Yeah.
So if we come up and we can ask Paul, there are that we, we can, you know, be at least informed with it. And if there's something that we see that's problematic, we can say, well, maybe you can, uh, uh, address that with them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it, uh, or just to, just to add to that, good news is, uh, uh, we now are accepting applications online through Permanise, which, uh, uh, we have a bunch that, you know, have just come in, of course, before Permanise, but things like your, the deadlines, we can populate that. So you all can see it too. So when it comes in, when does your first public hearing have to be by? When the, when the public hearing closes, when the decision, when does the decision need to be? So there's going to be more transparency, uh, with Permanise coming in, uh, into play. So it's just easier for everyone to see that and for us to, uh, more readily populate it.
Yeah, I think by getting the information more in advance, so like we talked to you, we have actually, A, either resolve issues that we see, we can ask them to try and resolve it, and then we can ask questions on their plan as opposed to starting from scratch.
Right.
Yeah, and then, I mean, and then we, you know, like, like tonight, I'm sure we're going to go over the same topics on, on the 14th. Um, and go through them all again, like we should have. Well, I, I've already said that piece on this, but, um, I, I, I mean, unless, unless anybody's opposed to it, I think we need to start enforcing that seven year rule. Things do happen occasionally, but I feel like with every single application, something happens and we get something late or we get something last minute and it's, um, it's not fair to anybody in calls. It bogs down our meetings and it makes things go 100 times slower than they should. Um, and again, I don't think anybody here is, it makes reckless decision, dishes, decisions, but, um, you know, it could lead to that and we don't want that either.
This is, I don't like emotional drag.
You see, Stan? All right, motion and a second. Any, uh, further discussion? All right, Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Tim.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you, everybody.